Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of the agenda.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard, seeing none. Approve full payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the bills. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes from the July 23, 2019 meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second to approve the July 23 minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's see, Kathy's not here yet, so approval to advertise for the school health position. Okay, well, that's her also. Let's see if Kathy's out there. Come on up, guys. Morning.
Good morning.
Your budget review.
Oh, that's first, okay. So I will send around a little more abbreviated version.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, the other additional page is the last page in your packet. It's not the standard that you'll see from every budget. It's just a one sheet, one sheet summary.
I think we asked this before, but I answered some different. I can't be held as a...
I think historically, just the size of, the size of both social services and public health's budget, we certainly could if that's, if that would be the board's wishes, but I think in the past it's, it came to the summary.
This is the whole budget plan, so it's going to be added into all of our program areas, which is a lot. We also have our grants separated out because we need to keep track of those separately. So it gets to be a large number, and you remember Lori, we had this years and years and years ago.
It used to be about 60 pages long, just for the health. And it breaks it off so much that you can't really tell anything by looking at each individual page.
And the board at that time had requested some very abbreviated version, so we kind of have adopted that over the years. So, so apologize, it's just a little bit more complicated. So these are, this page that I just handed out is our main areas of responsibility, and then underneath those, so those would be in the green, and underneath those would be our specific program and services areas. That's how our budget is divided, so this is really a summary, and if you look on that page, we have, we included the actual revenue and expenses from '18, so you can just see the trend, and then the revenue and expenses for '19, budgeted, and then our 2020 requests, revenue and expenses, and then our proposed 2020, and then we included our new request. There's a few new positions that I included in here requesting that for 2020. So under the administrative area, 430, 50, 10, and please interrupt me if I'm going too fast or you need clarification, under that area, and that's where our, obviously a lot of our revenue is, our request for revenue, and we have a request for the 437, 315, in our administrative area. I've included the public health analyst, which is a new position that counties are utilizing in public health. I put it as a .6. I think that would be a good way to start that position and develop that. We put it at .6 administrative support. We need someone to manage our PH doc, our documentation system within public health, and we are required to have a technician for that, so I put just a .6 in that area. So those two, you know, there's no grant funding for either one of those. Our financial manager currently will be retiring next year, so I changed that and included her, not, not, so I changed it to a new financial manager, so that position would clearly be at a lower step and grade, a new person coming in, and then we changed a roster position to a .6 for financial assistance, and there is no coming request for that because it will be saving a little bit of money by hiring someone at a lower rate than we currently have. Any questions in that administrative area? So next is our immunization services, flu, flu immunizations, and our disease prevention and control area. So there's a request for additional dollars in that area, partially because we have a nurse that is spending a significant amount of time on disease prevention and control. We have a number of tuberculosis cases that we need to follow, and we are responsible for direct observed therapy, so that means we have to watch them take their medication every day. So it's a significant amount of time that the nurse would spend, and oftentimes there's more than one client that we're serving, and our responsibility, of course, is to protect the public, so we need to have a nurse out there ensuring that they take their medications so, so their infection doesn't turn into a communicable disease. So there's a little bit more time added to that to be actually, you know, just to reflect actually what she's putting in. So, and of course, we can provide the flu shots, as you all know, and the immunization services for children, kids going into school, all the way through adults. So we provide that. We have vaccine for those that can't afford to, that have no insurance and cannot afford vaccine, so we provide that as well. You understand that area? Okay, and then our emergency.
Just Kathy, can I?
Sure.
So what is the, the prevention of infectious disease? What is the, is that 60,005-13 or 62?
My bifocals are not...
68.
68, see, my bifocals really aren't working. What is that? What's that number?
Yeah, that, that is...
68, 513 is the number.
Correct.
What is that?
That, and that is an increase from last year to reflect the nurse time. We put more nurse time into that disease prevention and control area.
Well...
So...
But, so I guess I...
That's the levy number, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. That's the levy, that's the levy request. Not an increase necessarily, it's a levy request.
Okay, 'cause the increase would be from the, from 71 to 81.
Right.
That's correct.
In expenditures?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct.
Okay, 'cause I, 'cause I look at that and I...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
So that's just a levy request, and expenses over revenues.
Correct.
For that, okay, thank you, Lori. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Lori. Okay, so the next area is our emergency preparedness, our EMS system, CPR. The EMS system is, of course, you approved already, I believe, the ambulance services of Barnesville, and they had increased their request to 9,620, so we include that in our budget, but that's part of the county dollars, and then our city readiness grants. So we had funding, grant funding for this position, which is a mandated area for public health. Our grant funding was reduced a bit, so you see the 7,953 ask. So, and again, the ambulance services went up, so there's an increase with their request as well. CPR services, we provide for other departments that request CPR training, so we have somebody internally that is trained to be a trainer, so they can provide CPR and first aid training for our, not only our staff, but any other county that needs a request for that. Next area, environmental services. So this is all our food pool and lodging services that my sanitarians do, all of the restaurants, pools, et cetera. We also have onsite sewage treatment in here and our demolition landfill inspection. Now, there is a little bit of revenue on the licensing for the sewage treatment systems and the demolition landfill, but you can see there's still, there's still expenses over revenue in those areas, so that might be an area to think about if you want to adjust fees for that, increasing fees for the demolition and the onsite sewage treatment. There's a little more time spent in those areas. But otherwise, the food pool and lodging, typically the revenue obtained from the licensing covers the expenses. We did have a decrease in some expenses with the retirement from our long-term sanitarian, and we hired an additional person at, of course, a lower rate, so...
Mr. Chair Commissioners, during our discussion when we looked at the demolition landfill inspection, one of the things that we discussed is, you know, whether you bring a pickup load or whether you bring an entire house, it's the same, same fee, so I encourage Kathy to take a peek at that and see if there's any additional revenues that we can look at.
Aye. The only, the only caution I put out there, that whatever we, however we increase fees in that demolition landfill, it seems like less will go there and more will go to our regular landfill.
Or my ditch.
Huh?
Or my ditch.
Yeah, or Jenny's ditch, and I guess, I guess, you know, I just want to be very cautious of that, you know, because...
Sure.
We want that demolition material in that landfill and not our sanitary landfill, so...
Sure.
So we have to be very careful there.
Sure, makes sense. Okay, thank you. The next area is, is a lot of, a variety of things in that, in that 470 area, so we have our public health clinic services. We still have the juvenile detention center listed, but of course, that's zeroed out as we will now providing, be providing services for the juvenile detention center, other than if there's an infectious disease outbreak, and we certainly have to still respond to that, even though we have a contracted company doing that. Our NFB, that stands for Nurse Family Partnership, our family home visiting, and our HFA is Healthy Families America. Those are our three home visiting programs. Two of them are evidence-based, which the state recognizes as the top level that we need to be providing. Family home visiting is not an evidence-based program, but we do see a lot of newborns and other clients in that area. So that is the area that really has a lot of expenses, because it's a program with a lot of training and a lot of requirements with the public health nurse. That's the area that is most impactful because it's prevention, so we're preventing child abuse and neglect, we're getting families on track with their economic self-sufficiencies, we're making sure that babies are cared for and healthy, et cetera, et cetera, doing some parenting things, education things, all kinds of things are happening, so we truly believe that is, and the state recognizes that's a mandated area because we need to work on the prevention end of making sure that kids are getting on the right track. Those that we serve, we hope to not see in, in kind of the deeper end costs of the juvenile detention and the jails, so it's really, it's well-recognized this board. In Clay County, I need to state it because I think it was a great thing that we were the first one in Minnesota to do that Nurse Family Partnership. Since then, there are, how many counties, Jamie? I walked in Minnesota.
And I honestly don't know the...
Yeah, but there's a lot of counties that have since followed suit, and so maybe not.
Yeah, I just want, so the agenda item that you have on today regarding Barnesville, that would end up being in this area, right? Would that go into that school line, health line item?
That's correct.
So it would just be offset revenues and, but they both would increase by about the same amount? Is that...
Correct. Yes.
That's not in here yet?
That's, no, that's not in here, you're right.
Okay, but they offset each other anyway, so it's, okay.
Right. And then we have our WIC, Women Infant Children, of course, that's, you know, a state grant. We have SHIP, Statewide Health Improvement Grant, that's a grant, and Clearway is our Tobacco Prevention Grant, Bush Bremer Grant covers some of those areas. We had United Way Grant and Health Education, so many of those are all of our health promotion areas from SHIP all the way down through the Health Education. So this is a big area where there's dollars put in, which because we, we do bill for all of the services in our home visiting program, so we get as much revenue as we can possibly get. We have 10 of home visiting dollars from the state, and we have a maternal-child health federal block grant, so a lot of funding goes into those programs. Okay, next page is our child and teen checkup outreach and child and teen checkup screening. The outreach is a grant, so that's fully funded. Our child and checkup screenings are screenings we do for, it's a health screening that the nurses provide for children on MA, when they qualify for that, and then we can bill for that also. We have a refugee health grant that helps us serve some refugee health needs if they are referred to us. We have the detox budget, of course, which is the big one in this area. Our opioid grant is done, and then the following, 6, 6,400, the consumer-directed community supports, all the way down to 6,440, that is our adult health area that Jamie supervises that area as well. So those are, we're dealing with a lot of the waivers, the seniors in their, in their homes.
And choices of assumptions.
Yeah, some special needs. So that's an area that, there's funding that we can bill for. It's through a time study now, so the funding is not always, we're not always able to, like, pinpoint exactly what we're going to get because it's based on time studies. So the nurses put in time, they code their time, and then it's a formula that nobody seems to know, other than the people that are directing that. So we have a lead case management is a new request. There were some services shifted from social services to us, where we do a lot in some of the over 65 program areas.
We are, we are the lead for all of the over 65 programs plus the, which is those for hospitalization, so that was a recent, about a year ago, change, and so it's a lot of programs. Basically, we serve over 1,000 clients every year. We have four health plans plus DHS that we work with under that program. We have a multitude of programs that we are responsible for. Most of our programs, we have a lead, it's not like a step or grade change, but it is part of their caseload is shifted so they can kind of make sure the rest of the team's on track with changes. So this is a pretty huge development. We haven't had this, we really could use that department, so. And then we came and asked for additional position, two of which we're trying to fill right now, but based on caseloads, we really need another full-time case manager. The good thing is it generates revenue. The more time you have to spend with clients, the more they're happy to reimburse us for the work that we do to serve the clients under the health plans and DHS. And the recommended caseload is between 40 to 70, and our nurses right now are anywhere from 80 to 100, so we are short that even one additional body would get us on the high end of what's accepted as standard for them, which they audit us on every year.
So I was conservative, and just, so I talked about the time studies, we're never quite sure about the revenue, so I was conservative in stating that was completely funded for that full-time position. So I put the 19,000, just because I am not exactly positive it could be covering all of it, but I, that's my best prediction for how the time studies work, just because we don't have a formula for that that we are aware of, I mean, that we're knowledgeable about.
The 19,000 is what you would expect we would have to fund?
Right.
After revenues.
Correct. That is correct. Thank you. So the proposed, of course, is that 946, and then I have the 70,000 as those new positions. 1,026.
Kenny, is there a question?
I have a question on line item 6,430 on that back page, the case management. So in our discussion, it always appears like, we talk about how case management is a revenue generator, and it, obviously, there are some revenues on here, but it seems like it's, the gap is becoming wider in terms of the expenses, and can you just talk to me a little bit about...
No, that really is about the health plans and their expectations for audits. We do reports, we use our case aids to do that as much as we can, but it used to be that, you know, all, the majority of the nurse's time was covered, but now, because of the health plans. Now, that's not the same for DHS, and public health does oversee all of the health plans, and so that's really what it's about. Unfortunately, our contracts through DHS with the health plans requires us to do trainings, audit reports, and they're reporting all that back to the federal government, and a lot of it has to do with their Medicare requirements.
So they're all...
We can't bill for it.
They're all regulated to where there's no more areas for revenue generation.
And what we're doing is using case aids to do as much of that as we can, so that we're using the nurses to serve the clients because then it's billed for time, so. But yeah, you're right, it is a challenge with the health plan requirements, which is, we have about 700 clients that we serve for now, so...
So we tap into the absolute maximum that we can in the way we code it, in the way we do our time studies as well, our time, so...
And that too would be helpful for the lead, just to make sure that we are, you know, utilizing those funding sources. I constantly remind the nurses that if you're talking about a client, you need to build for that.
That client, correct. Thank you.
Now, the one area that we didn't go into in detail is detox. Is there any questions, or do you like us to talk more in detail about the detox budget? Of course, it shows, you know, an in and out here, and I realize that Rhonda's already been here with her budget. I don't know if you have any questions about that, the detox specific?
I was just going to mention, Mr. Chair Commissioners, that when we went through Kathy's budget, we did make some adjustments to what you have of about $20,000, and so there have been some adjustments that have been made to.
Which way?
In the, in favor, in favor of the tax area.
We found some savings.
So then your request would be more in that 50,000 instead of 70?
Well, the savings would be another...
In different areas, yeah.
Yeah, and we've already included that savings.
We asked, the, the new requests were actually a little higher, but I asked them to go back and look at revenues, and so they were able to also address that.
Okay.
Mr.? I have a question, and it's line 5680 and 5685 having to do with Wilken County Food Pool and Lodging and Otter Tail. What is, can you explain that to me, please?
Well, we're, we're a community health board, so our funding for, and our requirements for the food pool and lodging come in as a Clay, Wilken, Otter Tail, Clay, Wilken and Otter Tail, I guess Becker is under the state plan. So we include them as well because our sanitarians cover Wilken County, so they, they do all of the food pool and lodging inspections for Wilken. All of that revenue comes to us.
Okay.
So in Otter Tail, they have their own sanitarians that do their own inspection, so their revenue meets their requirements, so that's why we zeroed out with Otter Tail. We don't, we, we have a lead, the person that is our sanitarian is the lead for the whole community health boards of all of the counties, but they have their sanitarians that do the work down there. So usually it's phone conversations and some meetings, but their revenue meets their expenses, so it's not anything in our budget for those companies.
Thank you. Kevin, you have something?
Yeah, I, Lori, these numbers from the sheet that they presented to us, they do not include any potential things that we may, may do with regards to the wage study?
No, they don't, they do not.
Okay.
Actually, yes, it does, because when I did the, what you have, I adjusted our interfund transfer, so the numbers on that sheet do not, but your interfund transfer number does. So it does, it is included in your, your big packet in the revenue fund, though, not detailed out in those line items.
Because if I do the, if I do the math here, I know, so, so what we're showing for the 2020 proposed levy dollars for Clay County, it's showing, and again, 946,000? My bifocals aren't reading these.
It's my eyes, too. I think it's just the print, don't worry.
It's the print.
I'm on the back page, so the, the number way in the 2020 proposed, it says 946,000 at the very bottom.
Yes.
So that, so those are the levy tax dollars before new requests.
Correct.
And then if you add the new request, that number goes to 1,016,000.
Correct.
Yep.
And that compares to the 2019 levy, which if I did my math correct, was 861,624. So we're at 17.9% increase.
Yeah, it's a pretty big increase.
And that's with dropping juvenile detention, even, I mean, because that's 120...
But that's, that's before we even, now, so if we incorporate a, some of this wage study stuff that goes in, does, does that increase our revenue at same, is it, is the revenue based on what we pay our employees, or is it a fixed revenue? So our revenues won't go up.
Correct.
Even though our employee wages would. I just want to just make sure that we're all on the same page on that, so that we, as we look at the entire county picture here.
Right.
But that, so that's really where, where you're at right now. It's a, it's basically an 18% increase over last year's levy. Okay. I have no further questions right now.
Any questions?
Anything else? You don't let detox get off that easy?
Yeah, no kidding. Wow. He's just here to look good.
I don't know if I'm doing my part or not.
Busy?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Whoops, do I have another?
Yeah, you got the school nurse job, so...
Yeah, so you have the request for approval of a new school district contract. That's with the Barnesville School. There's a new superintendent there, and he reached out to me because he would like to have school nursing services provided to his school district. We did that a number of years ago, and from the end of the contract a number of years ago, so he would like to implement that again. Our school nurses cover Ulin Hiddardal, DGF, and Holly School District already, so we do all the rural schools, so Barnesville was the only one that did not. As Jamie had talked about, they did, we do need a school nurse at over 1,000 students, and they're just, just a bit under that. So if you're requesting a contract for a school nurse, it would be, our contracted rate from our department is $43 an hour, and the total school hours would be about 1248, so their contract would be about 53,664. So if we hire a school nurse, we don't have anybody on staff, of course. It would require full time during the school year. They put in about 35 hours a week, and then those hours at a .6 are carried over to cover some of the school out days, the summer hours, so they, so they still get a .6 throughout the whole year and meet the requirements for the hours and the benefits. So that's how we worked it out with the Holly School, Darren had figured that out long ago, so it works very well.
And we, we met, picked met this morning, you know, concerning this issue, and I think we see, we both agreed, we saw the need, you know, for this, and there are no costs to the county involved in this. It's all paid for by the school district.
And I think it's important to note, as you said, there's a new superintendent there, and the reason this has taken a little longer is it needed to go to their school board, and, and so the hope is that we can get this filled before the school year. I think it's a good opportunity to have a nursing presence in the school district, specifically in Barnesville, and hopefully you're able to fill it with a local person who can, you know, work the school hours.
Just a question for Darren. I, I fully support this, but I, the, the, when, when they're going to be doing 35 hours a week, say, for nine months of the year, does that, I thought we had some labor issues with that, you know, similar to, we can't have somebody who's a variable hour, can't, can only work so many hours before they have to be, there be something else than variable hour.
Now, this is, this would be a full-time, well, .6 MPE, so they would be considered variable hour, and what would, we've actually already done this with, was it the Holly?
Holly.
Where we, they, they get their additional hours, their flex hours during the school year because technically they should be working less than 35, but then they use those flex hours during, like, Christmas break, spring break, summer, and so it averages out for your...
I, I just, I just don't want to see something come back that's, that after somebody might leave or something, say, well...
No, it shouldn't happen because it would be, it would be a off during the summer.
And it really does work out. We're doing that with Holly.
Okay, all right. Well, I, yeah, I just, I'm just...
Sure.
Want to make sure the bases are covered.
Yeah, just making sure that, I don't want something to come back and haunt us as well, so.
And they're truly told that when they, if we are so fortunate to be able to recruit someone, they're told that this is what the hours will be, this is how it's going to work, so, and that would be put in writing as well.
Very good. Thank you for that answer.
Okay, what are the board's wishes on this?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Hearing in, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheriff, come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. How've you been this morning?
Good morning, Sheriff.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So here today to kind of get a little bit of a jump start on our 2020 order. I did get an email from Nelson Ford that indicated the Dodge Caravans are, they're kind of phasing those out nowadays, are going to be going more towards the Voyagers, and the price of the Voyagers are going to be rising, so they said if you needed a caravan, the earlier the order, the better. And we do need one for 2020 as the current caravan that we're looking to replace has quite a few miles on it. In talking with County Administrator Larson, Auditor Johnson, about that particular order, it was determined it would probably be best just to order them all right now. It also helps us in our squad builder. We put an end of April deadline so we can get all of our cars that we're going to auction off into our spring auction. Historically, we've always done better in the spring auction when we sell those rather than the fall one, therefore it's best that we do get them in there. We ran into an issue in 2018 where we had to wait till January, till after January to order, and our last car came out of the shop on Labor Day, so nine months later, so it was a problem. 2019, we did that early order. It worked very well. Our last car got out of the shop right before the end of April deadline, so it works better for us by ordering early. As you can see, there are internal service funds available for it. The remaining internal service that's there, about $93,000, we would use some of those funds to upfit the new cars. I am looking as well at trying to save some funds by going to the all-wheel-drive Dodge Chargers rather than the Ford Explorers. We do give up a little bit in the storage room and the trunk and cargo area, but there's only about an inch difference in clearance between the... How much? About an inch. Oh, okay. About an inch difference in clearance between the utilities and the Chargers, and they are all-wheel-drive vehicles as well. We do have two of them in our fleet right now. They seem to be holding up fine. One of them did make a winter, or rather harsh winter here, and it was no issues or problems while operating that. We are looking to sell as well our 2015 F-250, and I think Solid Waste has an interest in that vehicle, so it would be a good vehicle for them.
Okay.
If it didn't get sold there, it gets sold at auction.
It gets sold at auction, yep.
So we did this last in 2019, and we saved some significant money, I think.
Yeah, correct. Our 2019 vehicles, we ended up saving about $48,000 because we did the early order, and actually, we were fortunate because there were other agencies that did put their order in, and they weren't able to get their 2019s, but we were, so it was a significant savings for us.
What's the difference between a Voyager and a caravan?
Not much, besides the price now. Obviously, with everything else going up, I think they're running into some tariff issues and stuff like that with the prices rising.
And Voyager is a minivan also, then?
It is a minivan as well. That seems to suit our Warrants and Transports Division very well, especially when they have to transport two, three, four people at times.
Right. Well, my, Sheriff, my question surrounded the Dodge Chargers versus SUVs, and I guess if you're comfortable with that, I, you know, I appreciate the fact that that's...
Significantly.
It's a significant savings compared to the Explorers we used to get, but...
It is.
I just want to make sure that, as these guys are traveling out in, out in the rural areas, that they can handle the harsh winters, so.
And like I said, we do have two of them in the fleet. The one did make it through our last winter, which is pretty harsh. I'm not looking to do the entire fleet in those Chargers, and it's actually given the guys a choice as far as what they, what they want to drive. It's, some of them don't want a Charger, and some of them prefer to have one, and they're the ones that have to spend a significant amount of time in them, and it looks comfortable. I have found just from driving mine that the seat is much more comfortable in a Charger than it is the utility, and I don't know why, I can't explain it, but it very much so is. It's just, it's a softer seat, and it's much more comfortable.
I'd move approval of the request.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion?
And I would like to say, too, though, you know, so when the sheriff talks about using some of that $94,000 excess funds, the revenues from the 2020 spring auction would also go back into that to help build that back up, right?
And that number does include the revenues from the 2019 spring auction as well.
It does.
It does, yep.
Yeah, in these two numbers here.
Yep, in those two numbers.
The 86,000 and 126,000.
Yep, it is included in there.
Very good.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing in, all in favor, the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. And also, if you're available on Monday, August 26 at 8:30, we're going to have a swearing in for a new deputy that we just gave a job offer to. It's Joshua Kleckner is his name, and that'll be at the Larson Training Room in the Law Enforcement Center. And at the same time, we're going to be doing Dave Johnson's promotional ceremony and badge opinion for his lieutenant promotion.
Sure.
What, what time?
8:30.
8:30.
It'll be Judge Lawson presiding.
Thank you.
Monday morning.
Monday morning, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rhonda's not here. We can do some committee reports, I guess, Jenny.
Thank you. Last week I attended.
Rhonda, come on up.
Good timing. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Larry and I are back from our board discussion last week about one of the new items I had put in the 2020 budget that we were hoping the board would consider if approving to start that position in 2019. This is for our long-term care program in the financial services unit, and it's a program that authorizes medical assistance for folks needing long-term care services, so nursing home, services in nursing homes and...
Waivered services.
Waivered services, yep.
In all of the programs.
Yep, yep. So we do have, right now, two financial workers managing that program, and they're managing over 900 individuals. The average, Larry had done some...
250 to 300 cases in other counties, so we've got 450 average between the two of them. So their caseloads are a lot larger than any of the other counties that responded to this email that I sent out. They've got a lot of experience. One's been here for 40 years, and the other one's been here 17 years, and they're struggling keeping up. And then obviously, retirement is very near to both of them, and the fear of leaving, having 57 years of experience, walk out the door and not giving us a lot of opportunity to get some new people trained into it is why. And again, just the simple fact that even with their experience, average caseloads are about 300 apiece, and they're doing 450, so that would cause me to make the request to see if we could get an additional person.
One of the things we've been fortunate is, is these two employees have really served as a resource for sure in our region, and even in beyond our region for this program. It's quite complex. If any of you have experienced or helping a loved one try to apply for long-term care services and planning for potential nursing home or assisted living services, it's quite complex, and these two know these programs, and so we're concerned about their retirement planning, well-deserved retirements, but I think we need some long, some good length of time to plan, succession plan, and plan for that heavy caseload. This is, as I put in the agenda item, this is a position, thankfully, that does get that 50% federal reimbursement. So just calculating out the cost, if the board were to approve the position, if we were able to start it as early as September, which that likely probably wouldn't happen, the cost would be a little over $9,000 considering that 50% reimbursement. And then in 2020, Darren did do a wage calculator, assuming Kim's retirement in April, and then we replaced her. The annual cost to do all of that and keep the three positions would be an additional close to $21,000 to the budget. So it's helpful to get that federal participation, but it would be an impact on the levy for 2020, and I did include that in the new request.
Mr. Chairman? So the, the long-term care, you said here, it's, right now, MA funds it for people who are over 65 or who have a disability. What about those who might, so anybody who is under the age of 65, if they're requiring long-term care services, they more than likely have a disability? Is that...
I mean, long-term care services are nursing home care or waivered services that people can get in their homes. And so if they're under 65, they can be on CATTI or DD waiver, any of the other waivers that we have, which provides services to someone in their home, can be of any age as long as they meet the qualifications.
And the qualifications would be income.
Income and being certified disabled, so they've had to, yes.
I guess, I guess my, my whole deal here is, is the, I think it's important to understand the education of why people should have their own long-term care policies. I'm glad that Clay County has offered that out for all county employees. What it can do is it can, you know, and I speak from experience with my mother, we had purchased a long-term care policy for her. Had we not had it, every, all of her life savings would have been depleted to cover those costs, and so it really becomes a, you know, quite a inexpensive insurance policy, you know, to protect your, I mean, it's not cheap, don't get me wrong, but it still becomes an inexpensive way of keeping a family's lifelong assets from being depleted for that type of an issue.
Good safety net, that's for sure.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I guess, I don't know how, you know, I mean, insurance agents, I think, should be the best proponents of that, but I think any way that we can encourage people to be considering getting that safety net would be a good thing, and it would also then take it out of the hands of having to have the government do it.
Absolutely. I mean, the downside about, I mean, I completely agree with that. I mean, looking at the people that we serve, though, if the asset limits are as low as they need to be to get services...
Right, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I'm just, you know, even those who have assets above that, if, if they end up in a disabling condition where they require long-term care services, their assets are going to go first, and that's the whole point of my conversation here.
And they go fast.
Yeah, and so, you know, I think it's more of an education piece, and I don't know if there's enough being done out there, you know, when you, there's more silver-haired people like three of us at this table than, and more and more getting to that age, and, you know, the likelihood of that happening is greater.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think that based on our demographics and we're going to see this program continue.
We're living longer. I mean, the life expectancy is longer now than it was 10 years ago, and that's why I think the numbers test to that, is the fact that the caseloads are increasing so much because of the fact that we have people living longer that do get to that point that, yes, all of a sudden, I've spent my money, I've retired and all of that, and sooner or later our income is depleted and we need services, and it helps a lot with the in-home. I think there's a lot, when I look at long-term care, it's the nursing home aspect, but it's the waivers as well that keeps people in homes.
And pardon me if I ask this question, I don't mean it to be taken the wrong way, but you, you said the caseload of our two here in Clay County are considerably higher than...
450 on average between the two of them.
Than other counties.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't necessarily mean that those other counties are also overworked. Maybe they, maybe they, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, you know? So certainly, our caseload is bigger. We're in, we might be in a higher populated area than some of the counties that responded, you know, to this, to the survey, so, you know, I, I don't, although it's nice for you to tell us that, I just don't know all the underlying details behind it to compare it to, to give it a good comparison.
Yeah, and there's a lot of factors to caseloads. Comparing caseloads across counties is difficult because we always like to try to go to our like-sized counties where they specialize a bit like we do in different areas, but there's a lot of factors you have to look into, those caseload sizes. But it does, in looking at those counties that are similarly structured than us, it really kind of raised the flag that, yeah, what our workers are telling us are really...
And that's what's more important to me, is what your workers are telling you than what some other counties might, average might be to ours. That's, I guess that was my point.
And this is a program where that succession planning really does require an extended length of time because of the complexity of this, these programs and, you know, the whole, the assets, the income, all that stuff that you have to look at and...
And the resources that they provide to a lot of community agencies, nursing homes, funeral homes, places like that that call. Today, we've got 57 years of experience, and a year and a half, if this position was approved, we'd have the most experienced, what would be a year and a half experience, which would be a huge change in our knowledge base, I think.
Okay, any other questions for these fine people? Are the board's wishes?
Well, I normally hate to get ahead of doing things before the budget, but in this, in this area, I can, I can see that it's going to get worse before it gets better, and I would, I would move that we authorize the request to do the hire starting September 2nd.
Motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion?
The one, the one piece I would add is, when we do get a retirement notification for the one employee, we'd be coming back before you and can give a bit more information too, and...
Yeah. The plan would be that this would be in addition to those two.
Yes, yep.
Okay, we have motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
The next item.
We do have the next one, yes. Okay, and you can see it.
All righty.
It's in your program, Mary. Okay, so this is the healthcare procurement. I came before the board, and I came before the board on June 25th, and at that time, the board adopted a resolution based on our county's review of the managed care organizations that responded to the RFP to serve folks that are on our public healthcare programs. And I did attach the resolution. At that time, we had four responders to serve our area. We had rated three of those, and the way our resolution read was that we had hoped for BluePlus and Medica and with Ucare being our third choice. The results of that came back from the Department of Human Services in July here, and they have approved Medica and Ucare to serve our, our individuals. We are concerned about that. BluePlus has been in our... We are concerned about that, Blue Plus has been in our county for a long time, they serve over ten thousand individuals. Currently, we have Blue Plus and Health Partners, Health Partners serves, um, a little under four hundred. Um, our hope was that the result would be, would have been Blue Plus and Medica. There is a mediation process, and I'd like the board's approval to go ahead and submit for the mediation process. One of the things that it will allow is the Department of Human Services to provide more information to the county on the basis for their decision, what did they look at? We only scored a small section of the health plan proposals that went to the state, so this would allow us to get more information, um, and we could decide to move forward with the mediation process, or we could decide to accept the health plans that the state proposed. But I feel like I don't wanna miss this opportunity to get more information from the state about what were the factors in the decision. And if approved, then I would submit that by Thursday, and then the next step, they would send information to the county, and that would give us a chance to review it and make a decision going forward.
Questions?
So, so the mediation request is to try to, for us to keep what we have versus what the state has selected?
Right, and it wouldn't be to keep what we have, because right now, we have Blue Plus and Health Partners. We, as a county, Health Partners has not been successful in our county because of their, um, they don't contract with primary care for Sanford. And so as you can see, so many of our folks, currently we have less than four hundred people on Health Partners and over ten thousand on Blue Plus, just based on those numbers, you can see our folks aren't having a choice.
So the mediation request would be to keep Blue Plus versus U Care?
Yes, yes, yes. And while we think, when we reviewed U Care, while we think that their, um, responses to the county questions we submitted were positive, and, and they have a, a broad enough provider pool that I think it would be, um, okay, we would have over ten thousand people switching their health plans. And I just think we need a bit more information from DHS before we.
Yeah, and, and, and that mediation, um, if, if Blue Plus was more expensive than U Care, uh, would it be the county's responsibility to, to make up the difference?
No, no, no. The really, the, the pieces we'd be looking at, because these are, these are, Larry maybe can explain it better, the health plans get a capitation for every individual that's approved, so it's the same capitation whether it goes to Blue Plus or Medica or U Care, correct? So it isn't necessarily, you know, for us about the cost of services, it's the provider pool, who did they contract for to meet the needs of our citizens, um, you know, some of those kinds of nuances.
Well, I, I think the, I think it's worthwhile to try the process. I mean, for ten thousand of our people to be switching, that is no fun, switching. Away from the biggest provider, too. Yeah, so I, I would, uh, I would, you know, I would move, uh, your, your request to intermediation, is that?
Yeah, the, the process doesn't require a resolution like it did about four years ago. If you recall about four years ago, it was the same thing, we, we, at that point, we lost, let's see, did we lose U Care or Medica? I think we lost Medica and gained Health Partners about four or five years ago, and we did the mediation process. We did it jointly with Becker and Ottertail Counties. We did go down to DHS and provide information as to why we felt the selection wasn't in our county's best interest, and it didn't, um, change the outcome, anyway, we got Health Partners.
My motion would be to support the Clay County Social Service Director's, uh, request to, for mediation for the two thousand twenty families and children and older adult mental health care plan selection.
Motion on a second. Motion on a second, but, uh, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. For the same side, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Darren, come on up.
Thank you.
All right. I brought my trusty sidekick here, too, she's, she's a good expert in this area.
Yes, she is.
All right, well, um, thanks for seeing us this morning. What I wanted to do is kind of give you an update on where we are on the insurance benefits. We had, uh, some of this conversation last week in the closed session, but then, um, after yesterday, or last week's, um, uh, meeting with the insurance committee, I wanted to bring you up to speed as well on what we were discussing. And so, um, a, a couple side notes on this for the insurance committee is, um, last month, we voted to go out for an RFP for our health benefits. Um, that is certainly in the process right now, we were supposed to have the results on the sixth when we had our insurance committee meeting, but they weren't ready yet, so we'll have those next time. Um, the other thing that we're changing this year is, uh, open enrollment. Um, we're going to run it from October fifteenth to November eighth this year, I think that's right, the date's right. Because, uh, the exchange opens on November first, and we always closed our open enrollment before the exchange opened. And so some people that wanna go out to the exchange for families and stuff, that will give them that week to compare prices and that type of thing, so I think that's a, a good move as well. Um, the thing that we're going to be proposing here, and what we're looking for is backing from the board, because in the month of August and September, we have to go out for benefit reopeners to the unions, and also, um, we have a couple negotiations coming up, that their contracts end at the end of the year. And so we wanted to get the board, uh, on, uh, approval to, to proceed down this path of the new benefits plan that we briefed to the insurance committee last week. So the first thing I wanted to do is say that we are making some changes to the, uh, benefit, um, program, but that the employees that are, um, currently hired here and will be hired till December thirty-first will be grandfathered in, so there won't be a lot of changes to the people that are already working. But some of the, um, suggestions that the insurance committee has made is that we'll be dropping the Triple Gold Plan, so those people that are on the Triple Gold Plan will have to find another, one of the four plans during open enrollment to switch to, um, and this would include current employees. And as you probably know, the county contribution was always calculated on the Triple Gold Family Plan. So if the Triple Gold Family goes away, we had to come up with another calculation to calculate the triple, the, um, county contribution. And so we went back and forth on this for probably a year, I would say, if not more, on what that calculation should be, and what we decided on would be, and when I say we, I'm talking about the insurance committee, because this was a unanimous vote by the insurance committee, who has a representative from each union on that insurance committee as well. Um, so what we're looking at is taking the average of the four remaining plans for the family plan, we would take the average of the family plan increase and apply that to the calculation for the family plan, who, the people who have family plan. And then we would take the average increase for the single plans, and we apply that to the county contribution for the single plans. So now what we're doing is we're starting to have two different levels, um, because one of our goals was to, number one, get more people on the family plans. Right now, we currently have ninety percent of people are on single, and only ten percent are on family. And what we're trying to do is, is raise those so that we're at maybe, uh, seventy, thirty, or sixty, forty. Um, and, and the other thing is trying to make the family plans a little bit more affordable. So by increasing the family county contribution and, and leaving the single county contribution and using this new calculation, um, it should start evening, evening that out a little bit more. The other, uh, recommendation is to, um, increase the family county contribution starting next year to two hundred dollars a month, so they would get two hundred dollars a month more, correct? Yes, so right now, when I, when I use numbers, um, I'm using this year's numbers. So this year, the county contribution is twelve hundred and ninety-four dollars a month for every employee, and what we're looking at is next year, it would be fourteen hundred and ninety-four dollars for the family plan, and then the single plan, we would use these same calculations for next year's, um, numbers. Um, the other thing that we looked at is, um, for anybody that's hired on January first of two thousand twenty or after, they would have a reduced single county contribution. And what that would be this year, we, as we figured it out, would be eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, what that does is that pays one hundred percent of the CMM one thousand single, that pays the single dental, and it pays the basic life. So they're getting our, um, uh, highest premium, lowest deductible plan, still one hundred percent covered for the single, um, single, uh, employees that take single coverage. Um, so by doing some of that offset, we're helping the family plans, and we're taking back and using the county contribution for health benefits rather than giving some of these huge cash backs that current employees are getting, so, um, and then future increases as we go forward would be based on the average of the four plans, family average of four plans, single going forward, so. Um, now, if a single employee that gets hired after January first, um, they can also take a higher deductible, lower plan, low, lower cost plan, and they would have some money left over, but they can use that money for other ancillary benefits, supplemental life, other of those type of things. Or, um, what we're looking into right now is, is, uh, anything that is left over would be contributed to either VBA or HSA.
Not cash?
Not cash, yeah, that would go into a VBA or HSA, so if you, and it makes sense, because if you're taking a high deductible can, um, plan, that you're gonna have to have more money coming out of your pocket if something happens, we wanna, we wanna contribute that into a VBA so that they have that and can pay for some of that deductible at that point.
But that's only new employees, correct?
That's for new employees, correct. The new, the current employees, it would, the, the only thing that would happen to the current employees would be the new county, county contribution calculation, which we would have to change anyway, and, um, the additional two hundred dollars a month, or twenty-four hundred dollars a month for, for family plans, so.
So, so for current employees, the current, let's talk in two thousand nineteen numbers, the current contribution, whether you chose family coverage or single coverage, is twelve ninety-four. What the proposal would be going into two thousand twenty would be that twelve ninety-four would go to fourteen ninety-four if you choose a family coverage plan.
Right.
If, if a single person selects to, or even if a married person selects to have the single plan, then they will remain at the twelve ninety-four, or it's equivalent in two thousand twenty numbers. Right, once we do the calculation. So, so that's the difference, um, you know, we've, we've talked about this, and, and I think, you know, as, as we talk about, uh, this wage study, we won't get into the details of it here, but when, you know, if you're talking about bringing everybody to market, then this, this is the time to do this, because your, your, your pay should, should be that, it should, it should be your compensation package and your benefit package. And I think the insurance committee, uh, was good in understanding that. I think it, it would have been difficult to make some of these changes without having this grandfather in there. And, but I think for the, the long, you know, at some point in time, everybody, uh, in this county will be under the new system that goes into place in two thousand twenty.
We will gain through attrition, so as people leave. Um, now, it doesn't, it also means that we will be probably putting out more money because hopefully more people will take family plans, and that's one of the goals that we're trying to do is.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna put out more money for those who choose that, but we're also saving a lot of money. The end result here, and I think, you know, that's something that between, you know, if we elect to do this, and depending on what we do on the, on the wage study issue, you know, I think we have to work with Lori, 'cause, 'cause there's gonna, by going through this process, there's gonna be a savings to the county.
Bottom line, yeah.
Bottom, bottom line, and so we need to, you know, for us, and that's why this is important to do this now, because it's, you know, it's not impacting any current employees, it's getting us into where separation of compensation and benefits clear, and being at, being at market, so to speak, with compensation. This is the perfect time to do it, and I wanna say to that insurance committee and all those people who served on that, I wanna thank them for, for understanding this and seeing that this is the, this is the way to go. And, and, and to, for both of you, for your, your work on this has been.
Thank you.
The, you know, we've talked about this for a long time, the, you know, the, the cash, so ultimately, at some day, there will be no cash given back for what is supposed to be health benefits.
Right, right. So, so basically, what we'll have is three different county contributions. We'll have a family county contribution, we'll have a current employee county contribution, and we'll have a new employee county contribution for single, 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 and everybody would get the same kind of contribution for family, for family plans.
Yeah, it's a good plan, that's long overdue, so.
Yep, it's been a, it's been a long, arduous process, but I think, I think we have a very good plan going forward. Like I said, it was a unanimous vote from the insurance committee, which is very good. Um, they will have to go back to their unions and, and talk this, and then, uh, when we start negotiations, uh, we're actually starting as early as, uh, Thursday this week. Um, this plan will be proposed as, as the county's.
In fairness to all those who voted for this, I do wanna say that, that, you know, the market study, even though numbers weren't talked about, but, but there was an anticipation from all of them that we would be doing something positive with that market study.
Right.
So I think we just, just to be clear on that, I, we can't get into the details of it yet, but it.
And I think that helps out with our advertising, too, because now we can, we can post that, you know, a, a lot of these were hidden costs that were never posted, or we would have a job opening or whatever, and now we would be able to post it at a little bit higher rate, so.
I also think from a negotiation standpoint, for, for, for union groups, uh, taking the average of three, of the three or four plans rather than identifying the one, makes, uh, makes that process a lot simpler.
Yeah, we want, if we change plans in the future, we won't have to go back in the negotiation table to figure out which plan we're gonna use. If we use the average of all the plans, the active plans, then it's just an ongoing thing, and makes it a little bit easier.
And, and, and there was a savings to that, too, for the county.
Right.
You know, and, but also, if there's a savings to the county, there's, you know, ultimately, there's gonna be, you know, the, those increases are shared fifty-fifty, you know, so there should be a savings to the employee, too.
Right, right. So, um, the, the, the last comment would be, this would be, um, I'm looking for board approval to go forward with this, but each union negotiation will be, um, voted on separately based on that, because if they come back and they want something different or whatever, then this might be off the table for them, depending on what they're, they're asking for, but I, I'm, I'm very hopeful that this should, should go.
Okay, one of the board's wishes?
Uh, so you're, you're looking for?
Yeah, I didn't put a really reservation in there, I guess, but, um, I'm just, I guess, looking for support, support of the insurance committee's.
Well, I, I would, I would move that we, um, through the contract process, uh, go through the re opener for benefits and for have our, um, our. Just give me a second here. Our human resources department negotiate this proposal as discussed today and presented.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second for HR to deal with this. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Good work, thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, I think it would be, I think it would be appropriate for us to, you know, with Tony's blessing, I think we're gonna need to schedule another executive session to talk about some issues in regards to the Wade study and all that stuff. I think we can do that, but I think we need to, you know, know what we wanna do there.
We should probably do that soon.
Yeah, you know, so.
I'm hoping that the last union, either reopener or negotiations, is scheduled for the end of September. So hopefully, we'll have a very good idea of where everybody is by the end of September. Now, it may be a little bit later.
Well, I was thinking sooner than that from the standpoint of, you know, our preliminary budget issue and also, you know, through that process so that we can determine how we're gonna present this. And we gotta do it legally, but I, you know, so maybe Steve and Darren, if you can work with Tony and I, I think we should get that executive session ASAP.
It's not even better.
I don't care if it's next week, but I think there's some things that we need to talk about as a board that can maybe reassure some of this.
I'd also like to say that even though she didn't say much today, she was extremely helpful in this whole process. She's always is. She definitely was a big help for this.
Good work, thanks.
Thank you.
Justin, come on up. Next gentleman is request for approval of gravel reclamation quotes. Justin.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we're looking to gain approval to accept a quote from mid-state reclamation to reclaim four inches of gravel and inject with a base one stabilizer. This would be on six point six miles of county roads, including seventy-four, eighty-one, and eighty-six. We did this method last year, but we waited until kind of the fall and ran into some wet weather, so we're looking to get it done a little bit sooner. The bids came in a little bit higher than last year. I believe last year it was thirty-seven cents a square yard. This year, cheapest quote was forty cents. And we already own the base one stabilizer, so it would just be the thirty-seven thousand dollars that we're looking to gain approval for. And that's already in our maintenance budget.
Questions for Justin?
Are you hoping to have this done before school starts?
Nineteenth of August is when they're slated to start.
And I think the other thing I noticed, specifically the Spring Prairie Township piece, was a discussion at the planning commission. We talked about how we were using this base one to try to help stabilize some of these roads and hope to do more as money allows, and so I just wanted to note that as well.
And we did try to partner on a little smaller portion in Spring Prairie, too, but I don't think we ever heard back from the colony if they wanted to partner with us on that, so it's just the one portion.
I'll make a motion to approve the mid-state reclamation quote.
Motion and a second to approve the quote. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, committee reports. Oh, Jenny.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the SWCD meeting. We had an update on the conservation camp, camper Owen Beckerleg that attended camp this summer. And we had a discussion on a stream bank erosion project update. Gary Wayland's program has kind of been on hold for a while, and now they're going to reapply with some different funding options, so hoping to get that done. Otherwise, we had updates from the Buffalo Red One Watershed One Plan Committee Report and the Wild Rice One Watershed One Plan Update. Of note is the pesticide container collection that will be at the landfill next week, the nineteenth through the twenty-third. I think that was well utilized in years past and hoping that it will be this year as well. And then this morning, we had the PIC committee where we discussed the school nurse in Barnesville. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, on August sixth, we had highway tracking committee meeting. And at that meeting, we talked about the engineering technician position update and hiring of Mason Thorstad and the motor grader position update on hiring of Billy Peters. And then we had a construction update on the Glendon Project, and that's moving along very nicely. And hopefully, there, you know, this weather isn't gonna stop them. They can get that area done that leads up to the school prior to, you know, sometime this month now. I know that Commissioner Gross had mentioned that they have some school activities starting the last week of August or something. And they're thinking that they can have most of that done. And I do wanna comment that I received a message from Chris Carlson, who was the engineer for the city of Glendon. And he gave high accolades to Dave and Justin for their work and involvement on that project, to the point where he had encouraged our entire county board to make a trip out to see that. I know our highway tracking committee is going to do that. I did mention that we did have a trip already as an entire board that reviewed all these projects. So there's some really good feedback. Fifteenth Avenue North has been done, is done now. The last time I drove by there was early, it was late last weekend or last week, and the road wasn't open yet, but it is paved now, so my guess, it's open by now. And we discussed some of these things about County Road eighty-one, eighty-six, which is talked about this morning when Justin was here. Clay County Insurance Committee meeting was also that same day. And we got a complete update on that this morning from Darren, so there's nothing more to report there. On the Thursday, August eighth, we had a diversion meeting and we, there was a couple of things that needed to be done with the new executive director position. We determined the best place to have would be to have a fmdiversion.gov domain name, so we're going through that process to have that done. We then went into executive session to discuss the details in the hiring of the executive director. And we came out of there and they continued to work on that final agreement. And so hopefully, that will happen soon. And then Monday, yesterday, August twelfth, we had a diversion authority chairs coordination meeting. And we got quite a few, had quite a few discussions. There's a lot of discussion about what would the recreational plan look like, possibilities for recreation along the thirty-five mile channel. There's different, and I think that they're working, Jenny, I think they're working with MetroCog on that to get some, I think there's some, maybe, I think there's some public information requests going out right now on that. And then we talked about, there's a property mitigation letter that was to the North Coast State Engineer updating that information. We talked more about this WIFI update. I haven't talked a lot about that here, but that's a federal program that allows us to apply for low-interest loans. And if that, and if we're successful in that, that can really have a significant impact on the cost of this project favorable to the project. We talked about the executive director and steps. And we talked a little bit more about mitigation with some local communities. There was really nothing new on the legal matters. And I think that's enough on that. Concludes my report.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I attended the insurance committee along with Administrator Larson and Commissioner Campbell. And a lot has been said about that, and that was my whole report for the week.
Okay. And I had the diversion authority meeting last week discussing the negotiations for the executive director, and that was it for me, so Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Attended highway tracking last week, that was covered by Commissioner Campbell. Also participated in insurance committee with Mr. Haney and Commissioner Campbell. And again, just reiterate the thanks that's been provided. The insurance committee has a great deal of work that they looked at different ideas and different plans, I think, understanding the sustainability of our current system. So we appreciate their moving forward. And also, just again, to reiterate the thanks to Darren and Jennifer. That was a short period of time to identify the financial impacts of doing that, and so they did a great job. On seventh, participated in the planning meeting for upcoming County-City Joint Powers Authority Group that will deal with land acquisitions as part of the diversion. We discussed the agenda for the upcoming meeting, which will be actually tomorrow, and dealt with some housekeeping issues. Afternoon, we worked both on the public health budget, that was before you this morning, and the juvenile facility budget that will be before you next week. I also met with Jane Qualley from US Soil, Solar, with Joe Olson and Matt from Planning and Zoning. They have, as you're all aware, they have five community solar gardens by Felton, and they're looking for potentially people who use XL electricity to check our interest if it would be something that would be a cost savings to the county. And so we may have further information about that in future budgets.
We do have a solar power.
With the city.
We do have, no, I think Commissioner Gross and I are on a committee about solar power opportunities. And so if that's something that needs to be at a committee level, you can include us.
Sounds great. We had, on the eighth, we had central administration, just a couple of highlights. Kurt Cannon talked about his experience down at Fort Hood. This board approved him to help with the transition from Minnesota, Minnesota National Guard soldiers coming back from deployment. They're looking for additional ways to increase veterans' court in both Clay and County, and they've been working with local corrections facilities to better identify veterans at intakes. We had, add some additional cameras to the parking lots to get better coverage. And also, we've talked about this prior, but again, hats off to Joe and his staff. Within the last month, they went and exchanged a hundred, one hundred and fifty flushometers in the correctional facility that saved the county tens of thousands of dollars by having our staff do the implementation. So great work there. Participated on the twelfth, the DA chair coordinator meeting, which Mr. Campbell has addressed. And that afternoon, yesterday afternoon, I met with Shelley Jeffers, Tim Osby, Seventh and Eighth District Judicial Administrator, and Judge Jay Carlson, the Seventh District Judicial Chair. One of the things that they, we've spoken about the need in Clay County. Currently, we have four courtrooms. The need is about four point six. And we actually included, or have asked the courts to complete a survey as part of our campus study. We were hoping and thinking that we had at least a minimum of another year to any major changes. As we discussed, the judicial district requested two new judge positions in the two thousand nineteen legislative session. They were given one. And so the Seventh District as a whole has petitioned the Supreme Court of Minnesota to have a judicial referee provided to the Seventh District. And so the challenge that we have as a county is they would like to place that referee here, based on the need. And so that's one of the things, I guess, as a board, we would have to give some direction. We spent part of yesterday afternoon with Shelley Jeffers after the meeting and with Joe Olson and looking at some space. But I guess we'll be needing some directive from this board on how you'd like us to move forward. We can have some of those.
If I can just toss something out there, you know, space is at a premium here. Thank you. And I'm just wondering, so how many days a week would this require? And I sit in, we sit in this room every Tuesday morning, and outside of that, this room sits empty the rest of the week.
Sure.
And I, you know, and I'm just wondering, we had talked about, I know Commissioner Wayland and I had encouraged Steve and everybody to look at modifying this room technology-wise. And I wonder if that might not be a potential solution to some of these needs, not for long term, but certainly for a period of time where maybe this could, on days where commission meetings aren't held, that this could be used as a, you know, and I, certainly, I understand that there would have to be technology issues. I understand how the courtroom layouts are and things like that. Maybe we could see if we can incorporate a dual use for this.
Do they have funding, Steve, the judicial district, to help pay for these requests at all?
No, nothing, nothing. So, and just so you're all aware, even with a judicial referee, that also comes with their law clerk and a court reporter. The, there is one space downstairs for a law clerk, but we would need to find some space for a court reporter also. So we did process through some, I think Commissioner Campbell's idea was certainly one of the ideas that we spoke about yesterday. And there are some other potential options that maybe we can talk a little bit in greater detail in the campus study on Monday. So, but I did wanna put that on your plate, just so you're aware that if the Supreme Court does approve petition, the need could be as early as November first. So there, that's, I guess, the timeframe that we would be looking at. Anybody have any questions at all? Just two other quick things, or three quick, two quick things. Gabe Tweetin wanted to remind you, each of you guys were provided an email, I think, earlier at the end of last week about an emergency manager workshop that's gonna be coming on board for elected and senior officials to deal with planning and operational coordination, public information warning of hazard, there were to be an all-hazard preparation issue in the county. Our commission, it's gonna be offered on two occasions, September eleventh and twelfth. Most of you will be attending the AMC conference that, starting that evening with a rural county meeting on the eleventh. And so it would probably be the only day that this board would be able to attend would be the eleventh. But if you have interest, let me know, and Colleen and I'll make sure that you're registered. And also, just a brief thing, we have, there's gonna be a drug court graduation tomorrow at one fifteen in courtroom one. It's a great program, and it's fun to hear the story of how the graduate has seen success in that program. That concludes my report.
Kevin, you had something?
Yeah, one of the things that Steve just mentioned that reminded me of, I had, and I'm assuming that every other commissioner got it too, and that was something that they wanted all of us to take this online deal regarding security. I don't know if you've all done that or not.
Email, an email.
Yeah, there was an email from, I believe it was from Tim Dent or Mark Sloan. I did get on and take that. It's like a fifteen or twenty-minute deal. It's all about, it's mostly about cybersecurity and what we as commissioners should know about that. So if you haven't done so, I would.
When was it sent out to us?
Uh, I, it, this was, this was probably, this was probably at least a month ago.
Okay.
And I think that they wanted us to all review it by a certain date, so maybe we can follow up on that. It's just something I did right on my phone while I was waiting for my car to get fixed one day, and it, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we're, we're all required to do it, and so if you haven't found the email, you'll be getting another one soon for a reminder.
I finally did it after my second notification, so.
I just have a question quick about the parking lot north of the LAC. What, when will that be done?
Oh, um, I think a lot, a lot of it depends on the weather. They're hoping to get all the, all the sidewalks in at, towards the end of last week, and the rain kind of stopped that, and so, um, right after that gets done, they'll be moving in.
And they're putting light poles up.
Yeah, and they're doing that in conjunction with the resurfacing of the other half of 9th Avenue and the area right out here, so. That should be done, it should be soon.
Soon.
Yeah.
Anything else, Tony?
I, I guess it's just worth following up. After Mr. Hanson's statements at the board meeting last Tuesday, the county did apply for a restraining order. It was granted, bars Mr. Hanson from having any contact with all five commissioners individually, both in their private and professional capacities, is set on for a hearing on Monday to review the parameters of the restraining order. But as of right now, he's barred from contact with you five individually here and outside of your role as commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Tony, if I can ask, so at that hearing, if we, if we decide we wanted to come and listen in on that, there's no issue with whether four of us showed up or not, is there in a, in a situation like that?
I don't really, so no, I mean, I, I, it's, since all five of you are named parties, you can attend the hearing if you want, if you don't.
I, I, I don't know if I'm going to or not, but I just.
Yeah, a, a lot of it will depend on this Mr. Hanson challenges it.
All right, Jared?